My last meeting in the county commission for.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the people of which is saying one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
We will begin with the minutes of our August 5th meeting.
Ninth or second?
No, second. With a motion by Tracy, second was made to approve the minutes of the August 5th meeting. All in favor? Two ayes, Jim. First up is Dave Ripman from the animal shelter. Dave, what do you have today?
Well, I'm asking a couple pains for the donation account. One, I'm asking for 29.5539 for our shots, vaccines for this coming year. I gotta get them ordered before November comes, because mother of my friends out. That would be for the rabies, St. Permarvo for the dogs, and the five-way for pan lease for the cats. That's around 600 shots for all of it. So that comes up to 29.5539 to come out of donation.
Okay, and that'll require an additional appropriation approved by the council.
Right. And my other one is I'm asking 15 out of the donation account.
Fifteen thousand?
Fifteen thousand to help finish up the spade neutering this year. We have done over 300 animals so far this year. And the veterinarians are not cheap. So, we're moving them out, you know, faster we move them out, faster we get them into. As long as they're nice animals, we try to keep them as long as we can. And most of the time, we can get them moving and we're getting them dumped out, you know. And like I said, if it's a vet, I mean, a veteran that needs a support animal, we help them out. You know, give us a cat or dog or whatever. If they need one and they can't afford it, we let them out. You know, that helps us, helps us help them out. So, that's what I'm asking.
Well, you're right, the veterinarians are not cheap anymore. That's why a lot of people are buying health insurance for their pets now.
Yeah. Well, I thank goodness that we have the donation to go back on for all of this, you know. Because that's saving a county a lot of money there, you know.
Yeah.
And our shot clinics, we have, what we have done so far, we've already paid back our rabies shots that we paid for last year. And then we got, had quite a few left, which I still got quite a few. But yet, I went ahead and we got some other vaccines that we needed and, you know, swapped around a little bit. So we didn't have to come up with some money. So that helped out. So, that's what's going on so far.
Okay.
So this is already, it's all good for him to move from donations for this over into the county? And then the council determines that, right? It's all good?
Yeah, we'll, we'll send his, we're approving his recommendation for an additional appropriation through the council. Okay. We have a motion by Tracy, second to me, to approve the additional appropriation request from the county council for the animal shelter. The amount of 29,659 dollars for shots and 15,000 dollars for spade neutering services. Any further questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Three, two ayes, Jim.
I'm laughing only because I had typed three just out of habit.
I must have been reading your laptop.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, thanks, Dave.
Any questions for me?
Okay. I don't have any.
Oh, I do want to say something about the highway. On the 325 and Springs Railroad, where the stop sign was covered in there, they did a good job cleaning that out. So I just want to recognize them for that.
Yeah. Hopefully that helped them a little bit.
Yeah, oh, I can see the sign pretty good now.
The 911 dispatch center, Jeff Griffin is here for 144 requests.
Sir, if you want to go ahead with everybody else, because I got a lot of stuff to talk about. I mean, that's totally up to you, but.
I don't think so, Jeff, go ahead.
All right.
You go too long, we'll cut you off.
Okay. So, this 144 is for a gentleman by the name of Kyle McCoy. He has worked, actually worked for us previously twice. He works full-time in Wayne County now. He is IDAX certified. I'd like to add him to my part-time pool. That way, I have an IDAX operator that can hopefully fill in, take open shifts once we get our shifts lined out and be able to take those. Obviously, he won't be able to work every day. I believe he told me he works a 223 or something like that. But he, his belief is he would be able to take a few shifts that can help us out a lot, especially with IDAX.
I move to approve for Kyle McCoy for that part-time.
Motion by Tracy, second by me, to approve the 144 request for the hire of Kyle McCoy at 911 dispatch. Any further questions?
No.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Two ayes, Jim. Okay, do you have anything else?
I do, I have a lot of things. Okay. Here is a key fob for the door on East Fifth Street. I understand you already have one, sir. Okay, and then I have one for Dale as well. We would like to invite you to stop by anytime and come in and see what's going on. Give your wisdom to us, okay?
I don't know about that.
All right. Okay. Currently, our air conditioning is out. It has been since yesterday, they're working on that. They had Steve Hudson come in and look at that. Changed a few filters that hadn't been changed in a while. But the motherboard is out on the air conditioning. So we've got fans running and the mayor's been over two or three times to check on us to make sure we're staying halfway cool. And hopefully, we'll get this weather break that they're talking about tonight. All right, so, we got, our two biggest issues are IDAX certification. Because obviously, we can't run license plates and we can't run vehicle or driver's license information without being IDAX certified. So we're working on that, working on getting that all taken care of. We do have arrangements made with Rush County. In the event that at some point, we have a shift where we don't have any IDAX operators, that would shift all of our emergency traffic to Rush County. They would run emergency traffic for us and obviously be able to answer hits and everything for us. But we would just have to wait until we get an IDAX operator to run the, like, traffic accidents and non-emergency type stuff the next time we have an IDAX operator on. So, and we're working on getting that done as well. With Mr. McCoy here, coming back to us, we have, again, we're working on the operator pool, trying to get as many part-time in there as well, so we can get those open shifts filled. Because right now, that's the biggest problem and it's what's eating up the overtime. Is when they, you know, they have open shifts. And we've looked at 10-hour shifts and 12-hour shifts and those kind of things with the operators that we have. And we're still going to have quite a bit of open spots. So, that's what we're working with there. We had a team meeting last Monday. We had a team meeting, went very well. Got a lot of good feedback. We stressed the SOPs, we stressed the county handbook. We did, supervisors are to begin reviewing the data every day. While they're in there, they're going to review the calls and the calls, the information's being put in the calls and working on that. And most of that is just reminders, you know, most overall, they're doing a great job. But it's just a reminder to keep those things up as well. We want to document, again, I want to stress to them to document everything. Even phone calls and things, we're going to start documenting even more of that just to have that information available. So that if there's ever a question, then we can always go back and get that information. So, to do that. I want to commend, there's several of the operators that have stepped up to help, helped me understand what's going on, because obviously, it's been a long time since I've been directly involved in this. But they've stepped up to help and do things and are getting things done as well. And to this point, we've received a lot of good feedback from the operators. So, I'm really pleased with where we're at today, since it's only been a week, roughly a week. But I feel pretty good about where we're at. We talked about and clarified and reaffirmed that we're always going to have two operators in the seats. We're never going to have one operator. So, that is there. Training plan, we've got IDAX training. We're trying, again, we're trying to get those people IDAX certified, so we don't have to transfer our stuff to Rush County and so that our officers and deputies can get the information that they need. So, working on that extensively. We are doing a lot of in-person training as far as the Flex software, using Spillman Flex and the way it's supposed to be used. And again, those are just reminders, you know, going over some things and trying to streamline stuff as well as that. Power phone courses and the EMD training, we're going back on that and making sure everybody's certified, getting their 30 hours, or excuse me, their 40 hours of training that they're required to do. Making sure that they're getting that. And also their state certifications reviewed. We're in the process of getting CPR training updated for all of them, so they can all be CPR trained. We're also, I was also told yesterday that the, there's EMD training in the power phone, which is what I was kind of concerned about, so that could help, you know, possibly help somebody walk through an EMD using the, using the, excuse me, AED. AED. So that if they're using that, they have that. As far as the Flex software, the software that we actually keep our calls and stuff in, I'm working with the regional support tech from Motorola. I'm going to try to get him to come in every other week for a while and just do refresher training. Get him to work. He's going, he's agreed to work some day shifts, some evening shifts, and try to get everybody some refresher training on Flex, because that's kind of a needed area as well. Because, you know, just the first few times I was in there, there was a few things that I thought they were doing the hard way, but the way they had been taught. So we talked about that, because obviously, that's my area that we have those as well. We're working on reviewing and revising all of our standard operating procedures. We're going to work with all the department heads to make sure that those are up to date and what they need to get done, so that we're dispatching the correct people for the correct calls and doing that as well. Track that, essentially, September 1st, we're going to start logging into the software just like our deputies and our officers do. So in addition to our time sheets, we're going to have a radio log backup to correspond those two things. So, to make sure that those, that those are there. So, and it's easy to track that way, so, to do that. And we want to start that September 1st. We went over the schedule, talked about scheduling, talked about overtime as far as that goes. So we want to try to limit the overtime, as much overtime as we can, because obviously, we're running short. So we talked about that and talked about the different ways to try to do that. Again, I'm going to try to use the part-timers as much as I possibly can to relieve that overtime cost to do that. But it's going to be very hard. We went over the employee positions, supervisor, trainer, IDAX coordinator, assistant coordinator. We went through all of those and we talked about those and we reaffirmed what the duties of each of us are. We went over the director's position as well. And, you know, some of them didn't know what my job actually was. And some of them didn't know what their job was. I mean, they knew what their job was, but according to the guideline, they didn't really know that. So there was some learning there as well. Reviewing a bunch of the old emails and making sure all those are caught up. Had a couple past due invoices that were submitted this week, got those taken care of. I also worked with Terry Cabbins and asked her if she decides for another agency to go online for doing claims, I'd like to be, to do that, since we don't have a whole lot of claims. So it shouldn't be too hard to, too hard to be able to do those and submit those online. On Wednesday of last week, we upgraded the Flex software to streamline call taking. The new screens allow for a lot better call taking. We can adjust the screens now, so the flow is what we need and what the officers are giving us as far as the calls go. Also, with those calls, which I'm really excited about, is we're going to be able to put, they're called special instructions. So if we get a difficulty breathing, for example, the instructions and the questions that the operators need to ask are going to appear right there on the screen. And then they can just answer those and go right through those. And then obviously, there's, you can add additional information as well. You know, if it's a homicide, to call the chief of police or the sheriff or whatever, any instructions that we want in there, so we can keep that. And make it consistent, whether it's with a new operator or a seasoned operator. The questions are going to be consistent, come up the same with every call. So, again, I'm pretty excited about that. The information in our Flex systems are now being transferred almost automatically to both the Connersville Fire Department and the EMS folks. So, previously, the times for their runs and everything that they needed, they had, they either had to log in or call down to get those times. Now, each of them have a program that they can just open their program up, hit a button, and it pulls all that information in. We have a few adjustments to do for the CFD, I was talking to Chief Jones yesterday. We've got a few adjustments to make sure it's getting the right data, but that information is coming over, so they don't have to log in and they don't have to call us if they can't get logged in. So, pretty excited about that. Also, addressing, we've got a new program that was actually paid for in the last upgrade, server upgrade that we did, so there's no cost there. And we're finally bringing that to fruition. We have a training scheduled for that, September 10th, 11th, and 12th. But we're only going to need one day, probably two hours actually, because what I'm going to do is I'm going to train my trainers, train myself, and then we'll train everybody else. And basically, what that program does, it allows for consistent addressing. It allows for the operators, when they type in an address, it's going to be type ahead, just like Google. So as they put 500 East Fifth in, it's going to give them an option for that. They also have the ability to type in Speedway or McDonald's or those kind of, those commonplaces, and those will come up in a list. So they'll be able to select from that. So, that in itself is going to make that process a little bit easier, a little bit more consistent. We'll be able to get addresses and information out a lot more consistent than what we are now. Because everybody's putting it in a different way. So this will require them to put it in a certain way, so that will help. Also, also with Flex, now that we got our software up to date, where everything's going good, we're going to work on what's called the State Link program. The State Link program allows our officers and deputies to run IDAX queries from their terminals, from their mobile data terminal. Terminals, they've been running the mobile product for some time, but they were not able to run those queries. So obviously, that in itself is going to help with the IDAX problem in the dispatch center, because they'll be able to run them themselves from the terminal. So, I was actually on the phone today with the state to find out where that process is. I know that Mike King has already got our firewall up to date for them, met state requirements, so we're good there, so we'll be able to move forward with that. We're getting, we're going to get their ID cards updated. Some of the operators don't have current county ID cards, so working with him for that. We're working on, I'm working on getting payroll, because right now, the way we're doing payroll is a little, little different than some of the other agencies. We're going to get that payroll sheet online, so they can keep track of it online rather than keeping it manually and then print it out, obviously, when it's time to do payroll. And that'll cut down on the time of that tremendously. Also, just yesterday, I was asking them about toilet paper and paper towels. And they said they go, we go to Walmart to get those. So to me, I thought that was kind of weird, so I got with Josh and so we're going to start getting our toilet paper and our paper towels and some other paper products from Josh through that process, rather than going to Walmart. So, and again, that was just. Tomorrow, I've got a representative from ECS, the radio console, he's coming. We've got a slight problem with the North console that the, when they plug their headsets in, they're getting kind of a crackling and everything, so he's going to look at that. He's also going to bring us some other headphones, headsets to look at, because the ones that we have, they're just, they're just not lasting. So, we're going to, I'm going to have him bring some, so we can test them out and see how they look and see how they work as well. Question I have, currently, there was a trainer stipend on the former director. I'd like to move that to one of my other people if I can. I don't know what the process for that, process is for that. But I don't, I don't want that. So we can, so as soon as I find someone that's interested in that, I'd like to move that to them if we find someone. So, I'll be free. Also, the last thing, we've had the sheriff's office and the Connersville City request the EMA teams a couple times, two, three times, and I was just curious if we'd made a decision on them yet. And then the next meeting, I'm going to start providing some stats to you for this call center. In a nutshell. Questions, comments, concerns?
As far as the trainer stipend goes, I think you should be able to work that out between your department and the auditor's.
Okay.
And as far as the EMA volunteers go.
Yes, sir.
I talked to Wade about that just in recent days, and he still has some paperwork to get taken care of.
Okay.
We're slow.
What?
We move at the speed of government.
Yes, sir, I know that, I know that, I've been around a lot. Just in the background.
Tracy, you got any questions?
No, but I will say, thank you. This is very thorough and a good report, and I'm sure people in our community also appreciated all of this that you've shared. We've all learned a lot about what goes on with dispatch and appreciate all of your work so far.
They're doing a great job.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, county clerk Don Hughes is here. Don, did you have anything you wanted to bring to this?
No, thank you.
Okay. Wade Walling isn't here, but I'll bring this up now. Did you see Wade's email about his request to apply for the federal fiscal year 2025 State Homeland Security Grant Program? He explains that the filing deadline is September 24th, and it takes him a while to get that done. So if we want to take advantage of that grant opportunity, we need him to start on that right away.
And it was a no match, is that right?
Yeah, no matching funds required.
So we just need to approve for that, for him to, I'm going to motion to move for him to be able to apply for that grant?
Okay, on second motion, we have a motion by Tracy, second by me, to allow the EMA director to apply for the federal fiscal year 2025 State Homeland Security Grant Program. All in favor?
Aye.
Two ayes, Jim. Take care of that. Our maintenance department, Mr. Jarboe, you have some quotes for us today?
I just want to start off by saying happy birthday, Tracy.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, but we were going to sing for you, because somebody offered a killer deal, but my voice is a little scratched today, so.
I haven't heard anybody say which, what first day it is.
Oh, boy. It says birthdays that go undercover in the dark. They don't get mentioned by number.
All right.
Just celebrating though, sounds good.
Here is a copy. So I was able to get, I had three, but one of them didn't get back with me in time. But, so here's two quotes and they differ quite a bit. So the first one, I believe, is Showmels Roofing. It seemed like every contractor that I tried to get come out here, asked me why I wasn't going with Showmels, and I was like, I'm not, not going with them. I'm trying to get enough quotes to move forward with this. So they had a lot of things, good to say about them. So, probation building, that's like our main focus. And then Zach's office. Showmels is, their quote only covers the probation building. And you can read, you know, what they intend on doing, it's a complete tear out all the way down to the base and then building it back up. And their total is 64, 650. And then I also have five-star roofing. They do a little bit different style roofing. They have like a spray-on roof. I will mention, these both come with warranties. Yeah, I think for an elevated option for 20 years, it's going to be an extra $1,200 through Schomels. Five Star offers a 20-year warranty of 15 to 10. And they all vary from the style roof that you get. So for probation building, they were looking at, for the one ply, just one spray coat, it was 16,000. For the top of the line that they offer, 20-year warranty on, was 19,000. That's just for the probation building, and then I also had them, we've had a lot of issues with the, I guess you could call it the porch of the jail, the entrance there. That is where the building, the front of the building, that porch was actually added on. So it's not one piece, and water goes down, the flashing, and Zach's been dealing with it since I've, I've been here. We've tried and tried and tried to repair it, but it just gets underneath that brick, and somehow find a way to his office, and then, right there in the lobby where the visitation screens are, I've redone that something like six times, so that's another headache. It's currently got a bucket sitting under it, which has pretty much had a bucket sitting under it for three years now. We fix it, or so we think we do, and it starts leaking again. But anyways, so tearing out the old porch, not structurally, but the rubber roofing, they're going to redo all that, and then take it from the face of the building right there halfway back. That's the first price that you see on this, I guess, second or third page, page eight, says jail building, and that's just the first half of the building, 6600 square foot. That's the first price at 33, 250. And then for their two ply shift, which is like what they, their top of the line that they offer, is 37,750. So with both of probation and the first half of the jail there, at their best product that, that they offer is like 57, something like that. So those are the two numbers that we got. Five Star offered a bunch of description as to what they use, what, you know, as far as the product goes, the coating, and how it's layered. The only additional fees that I see potential is probation up on, up above Wade's office, and then the restroom on the admin side of probation, adult side, the drains, want to have retrofit drains put in. I think they were right around $1,000 a piece, so. I started tearing out a section of the wall, so I can see the pipe coming down from the variant, from the roof over in probation in the restroom today, and I might redo that bathroom again, so. And probably tear out the floor as well. So that's something that has to happen, so.
Okay. There's quite a bit of difference between the price of these two bids. The bid from Schomels is for the flat roof on the Anex building only. Okay? And you say that even, even Five Star would have to install new retrofit drains?
Yes, yeah.
Either, either one of them is going to have to do that?
Yes.
All right. Now, am I reading this right? For the probation building alone, we can get their 20, 20-year guaranteed type roof for 19,000?
Yeah.
Plus the cost of five drains compared to almost 66,000?
Yeah, and the, the big difference is, is, so Schomels will come down, and they'll tear everything out from pretty much the ceiling, all the way out, and then they'll build the roof back up. Whereas Five Star, they will find the damaged spots that might have leaked in the past. They'll cut that out, build it up with their rubberized roofing, and then they go through, fix all the flashing, come through and spray on top of that. And I don't know how it's cheaper, but they, you know, they got a lot of big names that kind of back them, so.
But they eventually cover the entire area, right?
Yes.
The whole 5,000 square feet.
It will all be, everything that your normal roofing contractors would do, the flashing, gutters, and all that, they do, they just, they don't tear it all out, they just really spray on top of it. Fix the bad spots. Now, on the jail, it will be different, with that being gravel on the roof. They will have a crew in here that's going to have to pretty much take it all the way down, and then they'll do their job, because they can't spray on top of that.
Okay.
And they might have to remove the trees off of the annex.
Yeah, they're getting kind of bushy, don't they?
I mean, I cut some out in between the buildings. If only there was a door to get in there.
Okay, if I remember right, I think in this year's budget, we had an appropriation of 50,000 for this type of work. We could maybe find a few more dollars somewhere, but... I know we've got an appropriation large enough to take care of the probation building and the front part of the jail, then when you add in the, the southern half of it, you, you go, going way over. It's another 83,700.
Yeah, that would be total for that whole side. Maybe an additional like 50,000 or something like that, 46, yeah. Yeah, you broke it down into half the building, and then... Yeah.
Okay, that, that third, third set of figures here is for... Is that for both buildings?
So when he says the, the entire jail, he's talking about where Zach's office sits, you know, there's two buildings to the jails, essentially, where it splits right down the middle. Where the chiller is, that's the other side. So the 83,000 is strictly this side only. That's the 15,000 square foot that they're talking about. The 6,600, that's the porch, and then if you can take, if you can visualize, probably almost to where the chiller sits on the other building, straight across, a little over halfway, almost, I don't know, it's hard for me to explain, where the main door is, where you go up, it's going to go past that, probably 20 feet towards corrections. So that'd, that'd cover, hopefully, any leaks on the admin side. All the leaks in the jail so far, knock on wood, they're, they're holding up, and that's because I've already replaced like six of those retro drains. We've put six up a minute, so as far as in the blocks, they're no longer leaking.
So we can do the, we can do what we need to do right now with what we already have budgeted for this year, and then maybe the other, whatever's approved for next year's budget.
Yeah, I mean, even the 10-year warranty on the one ply, that would, that would put it under 50,000, if we went that route.
It's, looks like, I mean, they're both, these, I like that they have a lot of people and places they've had, so they have a lot of, a lot of things they've done, so they're definitely, looks like they've done a lot, this other company too.
Yeah, they're, they're based, you know, they're a lot, well, like, in, they're, they're names out there. You know, whereas locally, you know, like I said, I called numerous places, and they're like, whoa, why don't you use Schomels? So, I mean, I can't say anything negative towards that, because they've got other roofing companies recommending them as well, so.
You're just going through the process of bidding, we're supposed to do this anyway?
Yeah.
Or quoting, sorry.
I mean, in, in my personal opinion, you know, I'd like to see a lot of the jail done too, because that's the biggest headache that I deal with right now. And it's just a matter of time before probation ends up, well, it's just like one rainstorm away from everybody getting soaked there too, so. But if I get another phone call from Zach, I swear. I just have to empty my bucket once a week, so it's not that...
Yeah. And this is a long time, Kenny. I've seen my bucket sitting there for four years, probably, so.
Yeah.
It needs to happen, be taken care of. It's been in our budget, I think, maybe two years for that. We've talked about it, I know we've talked about it probably two years, so. You're going to be doing some more work that you'd already done, you're redoing some of that bathroom, so, yeah, it's kind of like you're writing on the wall there, wouldn't it?
Well, if there's no more difference in these prices, Tracy, I'd hate to, I'd hate to go for a, a 10-year roof versus a 20-year roof. Because there's not that much difference in the price.
Definitely go with the 20.
Yeah. Okay, we, there's no argument about the Anex building, what it needs. Now, on the jail, if we did just the, the 6600 square feet in the front, back, would that keep the rain off of the sheriff's head?
Yes.
That's, that's the main thing right there.
That would pretty much get, give you an idea, you know, where they bring them in, complex salad board, the booking process. If you can imagine, pretty much drawing a line by the employee bathroom back here, it's straight up, it's from that point forward, so. I mean, it's, it takes out the possibility of other offices that used to work in the past, you know, leaking. The one being Dan's old office. There's a retro drain in right now, but who's to say that's going to hold up? And that's something I don't think we want to waste all of our flooring that we just put in.
No. Okay, if we... If we went... Let me see here. If we went with the 20-year roof on probation, and that front portion of the jail both, that was 56,750. If the auditor could, could find some more to steal, an additional 67,500, we could do the best roof for both of them. Jane, you've got white fingers when it comes to finding money. Think we could swing that?
Yes, we can do it. I can find it.
Okay.
And then there'd be like 5,000 more for those five drains that we need, right? That's kind of why I broke down here.
The only thing that I need, like, that definitely need is two drains currently.
Okay.
That's above Wade's office, that drain, right now, we got it patched. We're not roofers, but we sure tried, and it doesn't leak currently, because we were getting water from his office all the way down to my office, basement, so it was not pleasant for all three offices that got to experience that. And then, like I said, the restroom, that's the other one, and that's just, it just sucks pretty much.
How long is the quote good for?
You know, I honestly didn't.
Just thinking, I, no, like, after the first year of how?
Well, I know, I did talk to both contractors. They both said that two weeks they could start. And they both gave about the same, you know, deadline, as far as how long it's going to take them. Without fluffing their feathers too much, you know, one to two weeks is what they said.
So if I understood correctly, on this jail building entire, that was including that front portion?
Yeah.
So it would be for the entire project for jail was 83?
With the 19 on top of that.
And then the 19 for the other, okay. So if we found that much, we could do it. I ever liked to do stuff halfway, if we got the money, we could do it.
Well, then you get the whole other side of the jail too.
And then you're going to have a holdoff on a possible winner. I don't know. That would be my hope, that we could just do this project, based on this quote.
Well, Jane feels confident she can find the extra 67,50, but...
67,50?
Yeah. That, that would be over what our original appropriation was for, for these, for this work. But maybe, you know, we'll have to remind the council while they're in budget hearings, we still got some unfinished work over there, you know?
And we, I think we have it now, though. We have it already in our other budgets for building. I think we can do it, you know what I'm saying, like, now?
The whole thing?
Yeah.
Be 102,700. I can, I can find that.
If you can find it, so auditor can find it, and we can take care of this project. And I think that the council would be happy that we've finally done this project, because they've been talking about it for a couple years too. That's the truth, so I think it'd be great. Get the jail and the annex taken care of, and no more leaks, and buckets, and walls, and I've just heard a lot and seen a lot. And you all are working more, so we're paying you more. So we would be saving money to go ahead and spend this money. If we can, that would be my motion. Moving. Now, it's up to you.
I would like to do the whole thing at once, if we can do so without causing somebody else to have to do without.
I think it's good. Jane can see it, I think that that would be a good place to know. So that's, I guess I'm making a motion to do the project, based on this quote. We won't want to lose it and go up, and then we've got a job half-done on our jail. Go through a winter, and who knows what might happen, right? Never know, so. I mean, if I'm taking care of this, that's what I would do, go ahead and take care of it if we can, that's what I'm making a motion for, Dale, but it's just me and you today.
Okay, you want to make that contingent on our ability to?
Yes, I'll make it contingent upon the ability to do it.
Okay.
There we go, Dale.
We have a motion by Tracy, second by me, to approve the, this quote from Five Star, to do the jail roof and the Anex roof. annex roof replacement. The amount of eighty-three thousand seven hundred for the jail, nineteen thousand for the annex. Contingent on our ability to find enough money to do it. Any further questions? One in favor?
Aye.
Two ayes, Jane. Get with us on this right away.
Almost feels like a birthday present.
As a birthday trick.
Haley says she'll sing.
Let's not, let's not tell Five Star anything until we're absolutely sure.
Okay, alright, sounds good. Other than that, um, just doing, uh, general maintenance, uh, working on, I've been working on, uh, some new SOPs, a new, uh, kind of restructuring a little bit to try to step back a little bit more and not be so hands-on. And try to, uh, do what I'm supposed to do, instead of what I've been doing, and, uh, so we've been slowly going into that. I'm short-handed, or I will be short-handed started Monday, Sarah is no longer going to, uh, assist in the custodian side of things, so I'll have Darcy, she's gonna be the, the mutton wolf over here, um, which is okay, she's good, uh, but you'll be seeing George and Tom more so. In the mornings doing floors and stuff like that, cause I'm gonna have them start, hopefully, shining these floors up a little more.
Okay.
Other than that, uh, if you know anywhere to find a good buffer for really cheap.
I'll go to Coral Cuffwell.
Oh, you met her. I definitely need that, so.
I know, we talked about this before too, those little specks from when they did this building, probably this paint had all splattered all over the tile. Is it like mineral spheres or something that you could clean, is that what would clean up that, I've always heard that, but I don't know. That would be a strong smell, so it'd need to be a, you guys, I don't know. Somebody come in and clean it, get all the paint off of it before you bucket.
Yeah.
But that, that would be good.
That's the plan, yeah, is get all that cleaned up and other things.
Thank you, Josh.
Alright, so I gotta thanks.
Thanks, Josh. Ryan Sigerson is here from probation, Ryan, did you have anything?
Nothing, nothing today, sir.
Okay. Sheriff Jones, do you have anything?
Yes, sir. Uh, I wasn't paying attention, you guys did vote to fix this, the jail, so I don't have to empty my bucket no more. We did, we voted for that, right, good, alright, I appreciate it.
You don't have to sit in under a, 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 much longer.
Here the drip, five seconds, yeah, I appreciate it. Well, now that you approved that, I'm here about the gate, uh, the gate for the new jail annex, that sort of connect the old jail and the new jail. I gave Tracy, I think I gave you all three of the quotes, or at least two of them, and just wondering if you guys have made a decision on that?
We have not. You're never satisfied, are you?
No, never. I'd, I'd almost go with the drip over, not having a gate, but if I get both, I'd be happy.
Well, I think, I think the next thing you'll see happen over there will be the paving of that whole parking area over there. Realistically, we're not gonna get a gate in before that happens, but, um, it's gonna require two gates to fit your purposes, right?
Yeah.
I know that we have a quote for the, the electronically controlled, uh, rolling gate.
Uh, both, all the quotes I gave were for both of the gates, one of them's the, the electronically controlled one, uh, the other one is just gonna be a swinging gate that has a lock on it. In case we have an emergency, we have to get out that way.
That would be, that would be, uh, west of the kitchen door?
Yeah, west of the kitchen door.
Okay.
Yep, and there's a door on Community Corrections that we didn't wanna block, so it's gonna be just, uh, on the other side of that, so they can still get their commissary in, but, yeah. And I was hoping that, uh, Josh would go to a fence building class and he could do it, but apparently he's too busy fixing leaks. So, because the fence that's up now, I wish we could repurpose that, because it's really not serving much of a purpose, but, uh, everybody I talked to said it's more expensive to repurpose it, I guess, so, all the quotes I got were to add on, add new fencing. And it was all eight to ten foot tall fence, and, I mean, it's, it's fairly expensive, but, it's something that, uh, it's something that we desperately need. We don't want people walking back and forth back there, cause we get a lot of foot traffic back there, and trafficking is something we have to worry about, and somebody could just walk right back there and put some drugs down, and then it's, get a phone call, and they pick it up, and somebody overdoses, and.
Let me ask you this. The, the fencing that currently exists between the women's facility and the, and Community Corrections building, will that need any beefing up or, or any attention, uh, before we consider doing these gates, because?
Are you talking about the fence, the south part of the, or the one that goes along the walkway?
The fencing that currently runs between?
Connects the two buildings?
Yeah, connects the two buildings.
I think that's sufficient. It's got the twist at the top, and I think it's sufficient, in my opinion, that's what I've, that's what I've got quotes on to, to do the exact same things, the exact same type of fence for the, the gate that moves and then the swinging gate that we need.
Okay. Well, that's all I'll say about that on camera. I just had a thought that I'll, I'll run past you later, you know?
Alright, I was just, I was just hoping that we could come up with a decision on whether or not, I mean, it, it is around twenty-five to thirty thousand, some change, something like that, for the, for both fences, um, and it would be nice if we could get that going, uh, be in the process of saying, hey, as soon as they're done paving, you come in and put this fence in, and then as soon as we can put people in that new building, I know we got a meeting in September sometime. Uh, so as soon as we put people in that building, that's the goal. But we, I think we need that fence before we start moving everybody.
Okay.
So we should make a decision soon, is what it's like saying, so we should do that, not necessarily right now, but definitely soon.
Yeah. We should do it soon, that's, that's for sure.
If you wanted to do that right now, that'd be great, you want to wait till next time?
I don't have any, I don't have any of that material in front of me right now. And I don't know if there will be anyone else bid on it or not.
Well, we could say that we're, we're gonna do it, we would agree that we're doing this project, I think that's what you wanna hear, and that, that is gonna be done.
And, yeah, the Olers bid that I got was, I got that a while ago, so I could always call them again and, they give me a, a big quote, and then, uh, Friendly Contracting was the other one, uh, see if their bids still, their, their quote's still good, and I could always call them and make sure, do you have all those quotes still? And then I got another one from, uh, another gentleman here in town, so, yeah, three quotes, it's just.
That's a good idea, though, cause it's probably been like, maybe a year ago.
Yeah, the Olers, the Olers is.
Been a long time on the Olers.
Probably six, eight months, so, I can call them and come back next time, I guess.
Okay.
And we'll be ready to make a decision.
Yeah, I'll get all those quotes to you as soon as I get them to you.
Thank you, Zach.
I only remember seeing two.
Yeah, the other one, I got Dale Munson, he gave me a name, and he gave me a quote, and, uh, I sent it, but it's, I'm not sure which two you seen. So, Friendly had one, Olor had one, and Harris Fencing, I think is what they call it, they had one, so.
Yeah, that might be the one we didn't, we haven't seen, I don't, I don't know that I've seen that Harris one either, I heard he had it, but I, I typically just send the other two, the ones I had.
I'll get them all three, and make sure that the, the old quotes are still good, and then I'll get all three of them and I'll hand deliver them to you.
Okay.
That's good.
And we can make a decision.
Alright.
Alright, anything else?
No?
Alright, good job, thank you.
County Surveyor, Bill Mackey?
One quick thing, um, I think before the last meeting, I emailed you all the twenty, twenty-six Pacer agreement with Butler Fairman before the last meeting. Um, we need to get that signed, it's, uh, yeah.
How much was that, again, I remember seeing it, but how much was it?
Yeah, I think it was like, I got it like that Monday before, did you have a chance to review it again?
I have.
It's, I think it's pretty typical, what?
Yeah, full of play language, nothing.
Yeah.
Now, Bill, uh, did you sit in on the discussion we had with Derek Towel about the, the changing our Pacer service to the, that other company that? They, they provide the, the equipment and our own crews can drive down the road and do all this?
No.
And it's accurate.
Yeah, I've heard about it, but you're not gonna get that done properly, have we talked anymore about it?
Well, here's what we told them at the time. We told them that we already had, uh, contractual agreement with Butler Fairman and Seaver to provide that service. And when, when that contractual obligation expires, then we, we said, we would take a serious look at switching from Butler Fairman to this type of thing, that involves you, the county highway superintendent, and us. And, um, yeah.
It was comparable in price, I remember that.
Has the state, has the state accepted the other? Have they actually accepted it, cause there for a while, they hadn't accepted it yet as using it for Pacer.
They have now, cause there's two neighboring counties are using it.
But whatever, don't matter to me, they just.
Well, it was an improvement on the system.
Yes.
And if I remember right, it would cost about, uh, two, three thousand dollars more per year than Butler Fairman's service.
He would have the equipment down there to dry the roads all the time.
Yeah.
Chris would.
And record, it keeps the record of everything in these roads, there was a lot of it.
It's a good system, and USI's the only one that has specific rights to this company.
Yes.
Whatever, I can just tell them that you're, you're in the process of waiting, see if you might wanna go another direction.
Yeah, I, um, that other system was impressive enough, that I think it certainly deserves consideration.
Yeah, well, I agree.
When does their, when does their contract end with us?
I really don't know.
Okay.
Um, I'm not sure.
So we just, uh, I, I've seen that, but I, I didn't see the date either, but, um.
Yeah, I'm not sure, um, it's usually a two year, isn't it?
Usually.
Because one year they dry the roads, and the other year they just do everything on paper.
Yeah.
No, that's no problem, just probably need to get moving on it. I don't know when the state needs the Pacer stuff, it too, you know, when do they require it being submitted to them?
Maybe we should talk with the couple of the, one of the neighboring counties too, to see how they, if it's working well for them, and.
I think Franklin County was.
Franklin County has it.
Okay.
And then.
Um, and, and I haven't seen Derek Towel around here for over a month, have you heard?
Um, he, yeah, he was busy, Dave couldn't come, he will be here at the fir, next meeting, he's supposed to be here at the next meeting.
Well, I think involving him in this, this part of the discussion would be appropriate.
Find out when is, you know, when Pacer has to be submitted to the state, I don't know.
But if we're, if we're gonna go to that new system, now would be the time.
Absolutely, I didn't know he was considering it, so no, that's great, okay, I'll just tell them that you guys are considering going ne, another direction, and we'll, we'll.
That's been a while back, and I thought you were in on that discussion?
No, there, he was here talking about it, and he, and he did the presentation.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was here for that.
Okay, you was here when, when the guy from that company came in and did the demonstration, and you know what we're talking about?
Yeah, absolutely, oh, yeah, yeah, no problem.
Yeah, okay. Do you remember the name of that company? It was kind of a odd.
They're not west, but they got, it's kind of a priority thing, and USI is the only one Indiana can use them, so.
Yeah, it's, uh, that's a technology, not, not, not everybody has.
No, so, okay, not a problem, I'll just let them know.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. Mr. County Attorney, do you have anything?
I don't think so.
Okay. Tracy, do you have any mail you need to share?
I can thank the clerk's office for giving me a birthday card.
That was nice of them, wasn't it?
It was very nice, and it was in my mailbox too, so, thank you.
In our mail section, I will mention this, and, and, Bill, you might take note of this too, that the, uh, they're changing the community crossings matching grant program.
Yeah, I know, going back to a million dollars.
Yeah, it's going back to a million dollars from the one point five maximum, and they're gonna do, um, offer around in October of this year for any projects that may be planned for twenty twenty-six. So Joe Lisa Bates is recommending that we probably should, um, pick twenty twenty-six, um, projects by October of this year.
And I think after this year, they'll go back to, didn't you, they'll do the selection earlier, because it all got changed a little later, it won't be October every year. I think it's gonna be earlier, like, next year, they're only doing one call here.
Yeah.
And they're going from three hundred million to a hundred and fifty million, and only a hundred million, but Marion County gets the option of fifty million, City and County, a hundred million is for the rest of the state, so they're cutting, they're cutting it down big time, so it's gonna be very competitive.
Yeah, so we.
Cause they did say, small counties and cities like us, we only pay, you know, seventy-five, twenty-five, will, half the money has to go to us in there. Like, City Connersville will be competing more against the bigger ones, because they're fifty-fifty, but a minimum it said, of what I, I was at the meeting, minimum of fifty million will have to be spread for all the smaller cities and counties, so we'll have a little advantage there. But when they cut it from a hundred and fifty to three hundred, or three hundred million to a hundred and fifty, it's gonna be competitive.
Yeah.
And also, the lady that's actually in charge that decides who gets money, she said, get your applications in early, if they're last four or five days before deadline, I want you to look at them.
Really?
Yes, Kathy, Kathy McAllo, Kathy McAllo, Kathy McAllo, and her, and that's what she said, don't turn them in, get them in early as you can. Cause yeah, I won't even open them and look at them if they're the last four days of deadline. So, gotta change.
Okay, well, I guess we've been warned. Also, we got two notifications from Endot today, and I forwarded both of them to you and, and Bill Munson.
Right here.
The, um, Endot is gonna further restrict parking on Central Avenue just north of Eleventh Street. They're gonna, uh, have no parking on the west side of State Road One on Central Avenue from the edge line of Eleventh Street to a point approximately one hundred and sixty feet north of the edge line of Eleventh Street. A distance of approximately one hundred and sixty feet, so, you go to the corner of Eleventh and Central, and a hundred and sixty feet north on the west side, they're not gonna allow any parking at all now. And that just came out today.
Is that probably so that the trucks can get a big swing, you turn there, so they don't hit the bridge?
Well, they've already moved the, um, center line there, so evidently, they feel like there's not enough room for traffic there. Also, on, in the twenty-five hundred, um, block of Park Road, they have announced. they have announced that they are going to install a, um, traffic signal at the entrance to the Reed Health Facility. So there will be an additional, uh, traffic signal at the entrance to the Reed Health Facility on Park Road. And, um, after that, there'll probably be no driving 60 mile an hour up Park Road.
Are you driving 60, Jeff? You drive 60?
No.
Oh.
The sheriff does. So that, that's not going to be good news for a lot of people that don't like
To stop?
Stoplights. So there will be an additional one there on Park Road. Bob, if you need that, I've got a copy of it here.
Thank you.
So, that's all I have for mail. You got any old business we need to take up and like? Under new business, we have representing the Tourism Bureau, Ms. Donna Schroeder. And you have a, a fee waiver request.
You do. I do. And, you know, I was going to bring one of these to Mr. Munson and Tracy. But he isn't here, so happy birthday.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. It's pretty bad. Get in there.
So, um, just for information purposes, we, we put those together. And, uh, when we have groups we know from out, you know, coming from out of town and we give them those. We had, uh, Saturday before last, we had 70 some people from all over the state that came from Landmark's Automobile Tour. And, uh, we got those ready for all of them. So hoping that, you know, either they'll want to come back, or they'll give those away to somebody else who will come back. And, um, Commissioner Strong and Rick Lemon and Judge Flum were good enough to give tours of the courtroom to those folks. And that, that was nice. They, they were really impressed with those murals, so. As well as Canal House and, um, Museum. They went to, um, the Anstead House, which you probably remember is Max Ellison's house, now it's Don Brown's. Wade Rummel's house for the McFarlands. The McFarlands built that house. Uh, Roberts Building. They were real impressed with the park, and we told them about the WPA. So, so that's kind of what we've been up to. And now, we are going to put, Tourism is doing this for Historic Connersville. We're going to put this sign up on the side of the museum, over the window that's next to the car room. And we're also going to have a, um, display of, of brochures out there with the hope that if people come, um, during the week and there's nobody there, the brochures and things will still be available to them. And we're going to have a screen, a TV screen, that will, um, list current events, places to visit, and possibly some restaurants. We're working on that. So anyway, to put this sign up, of course, there is a $50 fee. And I have come here to beg and plead and say, could you please waive that fee for this sign? For Historic Connersville, since it's on their building, but essentially for the partnership between the two entities, so. That's my request.
Well, I'd say yes to that. We should waive the fee for that sign. So I'll make that motion, waive the fee. You think, Bill?
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, we always do that for not-for-profit organizations, and tourism is a governmental unit.
It is.
Uh, we have a motion, but Tracy seconded me to waive the, uh, sign permit fee for tourism and the museum. All in favor?
Aye.
Two ayes, Jane.
And then we're also getting ready to order, um, I think I told you about those, the cemetery signs that will denote the different pioneer cemeteries. Do I have to ask for a waiver for those signs?
I wouldn't. We never had to before. Signs that are already up at the cemeteries, I don't recall any permitting issues on those at all.
Sure that I wasn't doing anything unethical.
They, they're, they're under the size limit that triggers the
Okay.
permitting process.
Yes, I think they're 16 by 24, if that's sound right. They're not very big.
No, they're not.
So, okay. Well, that's all I need to know, so.
I have a question about, all this information is really good. I remember in third grade, back in the day, we always went and toured and thing, you know, Connersville historical things and learned a lot. Just for understanding the community, but, um, information even like, like this would be good and helpful for early grade schoolers. I didn't know if there was anything like that going on with tourism, or they, or they're historical.
Well, yeah, all of those things are in the museum. And if we're going to have a, a third, a third or fourth grade class, because that's, you know, local in Indiana, we, um, make sure that the teachers take home enough of those. And tourism is also, during the bicentennial, and I think it was the city bicentennial, we did a coloring book. And, um, what we did was had high school kids, we picked out, I don't know, a dozen historic places and got the high school kids to draw, just make a line drawing, and then we made it into a coloring book. And then in the back, we put the addresses of those places and scrambled them up. And so then, the idea was, you got your parents to drive you around, you found buildings, colored them, bring them back, and show it to the people at the museum. And, um, and then you get a little card that says you're a junior historian. And so we're going to do those again for, um, for next year, for the 250th. And, uh, so I talked to our association about talking to the high school kids about that, so. I think that'll be fun.
Yeah, it will be.
So, alrighty, well, thanks, folks.
Okay, thank you very much. Here representing the, um, the regional public transit Whitewater, Whitewater
Whitewater Valley.
Whitewater Valley Transit now. Tricia Adkins.
I'm not coming to ask for money.
Yeah.
Um, you know, the presentation to you, just give me a little update on, um, the ridership. As you can see, it's continuing to grow. I think we're doing pretty good. Some points of interest, uh, three of our newest minivans, 2023s, were put on safety recall. So we had to park them. Uh, we parked those at the beginning of June and have, maybe they might be ready to go in September. So we went from 14 routes a day down to 10 or nine. So you will see a, a decrease in ridership until I can get those rolling again. We had a turnover in the dispatch area. We've got that replaced. Uh, we have hired two more drivers, which were at the exact same time that we got the recall. So, we are working on extending route hours so that we can cover more time and, uh, give drivers a little bit more hours so we can keep them. And I did have one vehicle that, um, I have requested to send to auction. It's one of the oldest ones, it's a 2015 that was in the original fleet. Has soft sore floor, catalytic converter, front end needs repaired. I'm not going to put any more money in it. But really, there's nothing crazy. I just wanted to come in and show you the numbers and make sure that you kind of keep my lid down.
Well, we appreciate that. I see the vans around town all the time.
I'm glad to hear that.
So I know that there's, um, there's plenty of demand.
Um, I have to tell you that, um, when Fayette County, you know, bowed out there at the end, I knew that there was demand, but I had no idea what that system was taking care of. I will not profess to say that we are doing the best on same-day call-in requests, but we did pick up an additional 14 dialysis clients that Fayette County was taking care of. A plus for that is as well, they were doing a private pay, a lot of those folks, and, um, they're, we were actually contracted with their insurance. So we were able to, to have the income from the insurance and, and it doesn't cost them anything. So that kind of helped them out a little bit. We have taken on several people going to work. I try to really do my best about prioritizing that. We are still working on a lot of those trips that go from Fayette County into Wayne County. Um, we've been doing some creative scheduling. People have to leave a little early, swinging through Liberty, picking folks up, going in the same direction. Appointment times within 30, 40 minutes of each other, so we're trying to, um, be proactive in trying to do that, but it's also a learning for passengers. They don't like to ride that long, you know? If you have an earlier appointment and you have to leave even earlier, then your appointment's done, you just have to wait on someone else, but that's public transportation. So we're trying to over-communicate and make sure people know, this is the way I'm going to have to take you, or we can try to reschedule you. I mean, we're just doing the best that we can do. But I feel like, I feel like it's coming along. The recall absolutely put us, put a hole in us for a little bit, so hopefully that'll be go back up and going in September, hopefully.
Yeah, I hope so. Well, I know it's not as easy as what a lot of people think it is.
It's not, no, it is not.
But, um, we'll try, won't we?
That's right. Sorry, I was late. I was in another meeting.
Quite all right.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, yes, thank you.
Thanks, Trish.
You're welcome.
We have a request, Tracy, from the Ministerial Association. Eric Hopkins, they want to have a 911 Remembrance Service out on the courthouse lawn, September the 11th. And that, they've done this one before. So as usual, they always, um, ask for permission first. So is that okay with you?
Yes, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve that. Ministerial Association request for the, it's not actually National Day of Prayer, but
No, it's a 911 Remembrance.
911 Remembrance, and it will be, is that 24 years this year? Is that correct?
Yeah.
24 years, wow.
I'll second the motion. Any further questions? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Two ayes, Jane. Is there any patron concerns in the room?
I have one from, I got ahead and hit it with work. Uh, Scott Osborne, he lives out, up north. He witnessed a pretty tragic accident. That was last month, a semi or a bus versus a motorcycle. Young lady lost her life. Yeah, um, right now, it's a two-way stop sign. He wanted to see if, some, what he had to do about going to get it, make, make it into a four-way stop. I told him I would provide, I'd do my best to get some guys out there to, uh, try to slow people down and stop people, but he wanted to ask the commissioners what process to go through to make it a four-way stop.
Where's it at? What, like?
400 North and 450 West, yeah. And with the corn up right now, it's, it's really bad. People might slow down a little bit, but they don't stop. And he said he set out the other day and seen nine cars just run the stop sign, and he said he almost witnessed a couple more accidents, so. I told him I'd say something, something to you guys, whatever the process is.
Well, it would require ordinance passed by the commissioners. But that, I know how easy it is for people to slip through a stop sign out in that neighborhood, especially when the corn is so high right now, you know?
Yeah, and it's pretty close to the road and
Yeah.
it's, uh, it's hard to see. I mean, it's, it's one thing to run the stop sign when you can see if anything's coming, but when you can't see if anything's coming, you still run it. And I think people just get used to running it, so. I'll send some guys out there, and if we have to write or stop a lot of cars and write a lot of tickets, then maybe it's something you guys may consider.
Yeah. Okay.
Is there a process for someone in this, Jeff, if they wanted to request?
There's not like a formal process, but they could be asked to be put on the agenda and discuss it with you guys. I mean, you guys make the decision. There's no, like, you have incredibly broad discretion to put stop signs up on country county roads, but there's no you can do it or not do it, there is no, you don't have to like, do studies or anything like that, you just pass the ordinance.
So I didn't know if the neighborhood was requesting it or had signed petitions, nothing like that, is anything you would...
There, there's no requirement of that, certainly. Now, knowing you guys, if you had something like that in front of you, that might be a whole more water than...
And if you had, like, reports of multiple accidents there, things that would verify it or prove?
It sounds like you're not really, you're not going to change anything because they, they should have stopped anyway, but what it's going to do is make everybody kind of, you hope one of them stops.
Yeah, that's the hope, if somebody stops.
Well, um, yeah, I, I know a little bit about that accident that happened out there. But you, you, you know that neighborhood as well as I do. You're, you're practically out in the middle of nowhere. And a lot of people cannot justify sticking a stop sign in the middle of nowhere, you know? But once you, once you put it there, it's going to affect everybody and, and and especially when the crops are out, you can see another vehicle for the next mile.
Yeah.
And, um...
I think the big problem is when the corn's in, it's, it's just hard to see.
Yeah.
And again, people are so used to probably just going right through it because they, they don't see anybody coming, and they just continue to do that, forget to stop, and it was a...
I assume do it right here on Central Avenue.
Oh, yeah.
It's not unusual.
The ultimate goal is to get them to slow down at least, and I think that's what happened on this accident. The bus slowed down, but they didn't stop all the way, and it just, perfect timing.
Yeah.
So. But I, I just talked about, I mentioned it to you guys.
Okay.
All right.
Well, in a similar issue, I've been asked to take a look at a parking issue in the Harrisburg neighborhood. The resident that lives the first house south of the Fayette Central School is, um, requesting that the commissioners establish a no parking or standing zone in front of his driveway. This gentleman lives, like I said, the first house south of Harrisburg School. And probably over a hundred cars a day lining up there to pick their kids up from school. And, uh, they park in front of his entire property, and there's many times when he can't get in and out of his driveway for it. And, uh, some of the, um, some, well, I guess there's been some rather terse discussions between him and some of the people that have to move to let him in or out. And, um, the, the guy's 90 years old, and he says, I never know when I may need an ambulance or need to do this and do that. And he says, I simply cannot schedule my arrivals and departures from home. by this school schedule." So, I went out and took a look at it myself. The school doesn't let out until two-thirty. I got out there about one-forty-five and they were already lined up past his house. So, there's a, they've got him pretty well blocked up for at least an hour or more there every day. And I can certainly understand his concerns. So, I explained to him that the only thing the commissioners could do legally would be to establish a no parking or standing zone for a specified distance there, and we would have to put a sign up to warn any, anyone that parks there that they would be in violation. So, there's where, you know, if we decide to move forward with this, where you would come
Of course.
in handy for putting together an ordinance.
Yep.
I've, I've got a deputy out there just about every day, Danny Hill. He goes out there. He's talked to the people that are in the way and told them to move. Working with the principal to send out a letter that says, "Do not block any driveways," but they line up an hour before the school's out and it's, every school, there's issues with pickup. I mean, not in Everton, they line up on Everton Road and it's, it's just, what do you do? So, it's been addressed with some of the people that have done it. Like I said, Tracy, the principal sent a letter home, but she hasn't already. It says, "Don't do this," but if it's a problem, I think Danny's talked to him also, and if it happens, just let us know and we'll go down and tell people to move, but no parking sign. They're not supposed to park there anyway, they're on the road, so. Working with the school to try to have a better system of picking kids up. If there's no better system, that's about as good as it gets.
Is, is this the only driveway that is blocked? This one man in that? Well, you would think they could, you know, having some common sense, leave it down.
Grammy pickup, they, you can see they space out, they're used to it now, they don't block traffic. They block driveways, but it's just training, training parents that, hey, don't block this driveway.
If they have a crossbar.
Instead, we have to train parents to think that way.
Yeah, it is. Like it used to be like common sense.
Don't block driveways.
And evidently, for some of the incidents that has happened out there, I think when he does have to ask someone to move to let him in or out, they simply do not want to lose their place in the morning.
Yeah, that's what it is.
And they say, "No, I don't want to move."
Oh, my goodness. Disrespect that old guy.
And they're well, right now, there is no legal
The principal has, she's walked down there and told him to move. Danny's walked, Danny's drove down there and told him to move. It's just
They eventually will.
Yeah, eventually they'll get it. The same people are usually in the same spot. They show up about the same time, so.
Because even if we had a sign there, what does that mean? That you're gonna be out there and write citations?
We could write citations, technically, but I think we could write citations now because they're parked in the roadway.
Yeah, I suppose I say, they're already doing something, so.
Yeah, it's, it's a tough, it's a tough situation.
So, I guess my question is do, do we want to have the county attorney to prepare a parking ordinance for this situation? Would we consider at a later meeting?
I think so. I mean, might as well try that way. I would hope we don't have to go to that point and write this letter that the principal sent it out, and maybe we'll see some help for him. But yes, we could prepare it, because we may need to do it, we may need to do this. I've seen it in Everton, it's horrible. It's really bad out there.
Oh, yeah.
Multiple drives are parked in front of.
At one point, they were on State Route One, blocking the road. Snaked around a different road now, but it's
Okay, Jeff, would you mind?
I will, but I need a little bit more information. Like I don't, do, do we want to have a parking ordinance that says you can't park, where, where, where you're saying you can't park? Like, how do you want it labeled?
Well
Are we just inserting a parking sign? What are we doing?
It would be establishing a no parking or standing zone at a specific address like X number of feet on either side of the driveway.
Yeah, do you want me to have that, like, that's what I'm saying, I don't have that information, right?
Okay, well, we, I, we might write something up for you.
Isn't there signs that just say, "Do not block driveway"? I've seen those places. I mean, wouldn't, that'd be like their common sense sign, "Don't block driveways"? I don't know.
I mean, you kind of want to avoid just signs everywhere, right?
Yeah.
This guy might not love a sign in his yard, you know, and that thing's got a weed eat, those kind of things. So, I kind of like the idea of, let's see, this is, I understand, this is new.
Yeah, we just got the complaint.
No, but I'm saying this, this, this way they're picking up is
No, no, this is, it's been going this way for a while. I don't know if it's just new parents that are saying, "Hey, don't block his driveway," or if he just noticed it.
You know, I mean, a handful of times going up, you know, maybe you write two or three tickets. And I don't, I'm of, I'm of the position, I think there's a violation already.
Yeah. Sitting in the roadway.
That's right.
Could you put a, no parking stripes and stuff and write on there on the road?
I think you can do that on the road. If there was a curb, maybe, but there's no curb, it's just county road.
Well, if you give, if you give one ticket for simply parking in the road, you gotta give them all.
I agree. I mean, yeah, I agree.
You know, now, do you want to do that?
Not really, because there's no other option, there's no other option for picking your kids up at Fayette Central, any of the great schools, it's just,
I
it's a nightmare.
You said there is one officer that's usually there to have that shift, so what I would do if it were me, I would give that, that guy, that officer's cell phone number, and if the next time he tries to pull in, or he tries to pull out, and he gets somebody rude that says, "No," he shoots, texts that officer, and if that officer's able to go, then he writes that person a ticket.
He has no authority to write a ticket because there are no ordinance.
Yeah, there's a tennis court.
Yeah.
There's, there's, you, you can't park on a roadway.
Can't park on a roadway.
Yeah, they're parked on the roadway.
And they get, you get discretion.
Yeah.
He, he could see somebody break fifteen traffic ordinances on the way home. He didn't have to write a single ticket. In fact, he could write fifteen tickets and prosecutor could not go after any of them. I would, I would say that's how you handle it. And eventually, they're gonna not mess with the old man.
Yeah.
You see what I'm saying?
I think.
Yeah. I think that's
And maybe we talk to him, maybe he does want a sign in his yard, but I personally, if it's me, I don't want a sign in my yard.
Well, I did talk to him and I asked him about
They're not a beautiful thing to have in your yard, Warren.
He said, he's not a big fan of signs, but he says, "I'd rather have the sign than have to go out there and get permission to leave my driveway all the time."
Yeah, and that is absurd. I mean, I can't even imagine having to plan your day around not having
Oh, my goodness, it's awful.
That's wild.
Say, let us work on it for a couple, for the, for the next two weeks until I come back from my, my gate. And then
That's right.
Let us work on that and we'll see if we can get it fixed in the two weeks, and if not, then we may have to do a sign.
What do you think?
If you fix this problem, you know.
And I don't know, what I don't know is, can we put up a temporary sign? I mean, we don't have to have an ordinance put up a temporary sign.
One that they just stick out every school year?
No, I mean, just one to be put up for a couple of weeks and gets everybody kind of trained.
I don't know. A, a temporary sign. That would be one that did not, no post in the ground. Then he would, he would really be cool mowing around that, I guess.
Well, he only have to do it for two weeks. Well, I mean, I, I would talk to him about what he wants. He, he may, you're right, he may want the sign in his yard and I mean, I'll be happy to, to get it going. I don't know that you, I don't know that you're essentially, all you're wanting to do is creating a no parking from here to the curb on a place you can't park from here to the curb anyway.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's already against the law.
You see what I'm saying?
We don't need a sign.
Yeah, no. Well, if I was writing the ordinance, I would call it a no stopping or standing zone at this location.
Yeah.
Because if, if they're, if they're sitting there and their their motor is running and their foot is on the brake, but they're not moving, they're not parked. They're standing.
They can't legally do that either. I can't just go on the way on the highway and decide I'm just gonna stop in the middle of the highway and block traffic, truck traffic at some point in time.
They're not blocking through traffic, because there is
You can get through there on both ways?
Yeah, you can, you can get down the road, but if they're blocking his driveway, there is the problem, Jeff. He can't get in and out of his driveway.
I understand that. What I'm saying is, I, I think they can write a ticket with or without this new ordinance.
I think so, too.
You don't think they can?
I don't. No, I don't know. I never heard of that happening.
I think the sheriff said you can.
Yeah, we can.
Yeah.
Again, we're gonna get into, well, you didn't write everybody else's, all the other seventy-five people a ticket, but you were, you were the only one blocking the driveway.
You can't go park in a fire zone, and just because the car's running and it's in gear means you're not parked. And that's not the, that's not the statutory, park means not moving. Park doesn't mean I'm still in my car and I, so I can do that. But, but, but if it, if you're, if your goal is to get a sign up, then that's a whole different thing, but I also don't even know that you need a sign. I don't know you need an orange. Just go put a sign that says, "No parking," because I don't think you can park there anyway.
Right.
But you're saying you don't want it to say, "No parking," you want it to say no what, what's your, what was your phrase again? Pretty good, no
Parking or standing.
No, standing, sitting.
Jogging place.
Have you never heard the term standing?
I'm going blank right now, I apologize. No, no standing?
That, that is a common
Yeah, I'm trying to think of like a location where I see that, like, right.
Sitting in your, in your vehicle, won't stop.
I kind of like the idea of just don't block the driveway.
Yeah.
You know, you're going to practice on an ordinance or not?
If you tell me to practice on an ordinance, I'll do it.
Could we have him do that?
I don't really want him to waste his time on that, honestly.
He's got nothing else to do.
I think the sheriff has a plan. Sheriff has a plan, and I think it's already against the law, that's what's happening. So, it's just like, we're doubling up on something, working
Hey, Kate found a sign. You want to put a sign up? Just go put a sign up.
Just go put a sign up.
We just need to set a standard for our schools all together and get our principals and stuff in.
If the principal sends a letter out saying I mean, but I think here's the problem. Dale's got a guy who he's sympathetic to that's came up to him and he wants to resolve his issue.
Well, I think the sheriff's department will help him out, like, yeah, go over there and get the people away.
If that was happening to me, I don't think I would be as patient as this gentleman.
Sure. I, I can't, one time would be enough for me to lose my cool.
Me, too.
Yeah, because quite honestly, it's just a the reason they're doing it is completely okay, but the idea that you're not wise enough to drive and not block a driveway seems pretty silly to me.
And, and having a sign there isn't gonna make those same people do anything any different. I think they'll still, because it's already wrong, so.
I'm not sure. See, that's the thing, though, is legally, and I'm, I'm struck, what, what road is this on?
Where is that road?
No, it's a, right in front of Fayette Central.
Yeah.
Uh, two-twenty-five.
Two-twenty-five.
Can you, because what I'm wanting to know is, is it, is it, is it already a state traffic violation to block a driveway in Indiana?
Well, that I don't know.
I think it is, because of safety, I, I would imagine, because fire
All right, so according to Indiana Code nine dash twenty-one dash sixteen dash five, it's illegal to stop, stand, or, stand, there you go.
There it is.
It's illegal to stop, stand, or park a vehicle in front of a public or private driveway.
So, that needs to be in the principal's letter to the parents. And then they know they're breaking the law, and then the sheriff's department will be, you know, will start signing people. I just think if you, if a parent got a letter, if I were a parent and I didn't know any better, that kind of letter would be saying, "Oh, wow, this has been not okay," you know? Then you better stop or you're gonna get a citation, right? But there's a worse problem out at that other school than there is this one, I think. It's really bad. So, maybe all of schools should just do this, right?
I mean, personally, I think they should just go over there and start giving everybody a ticket that does it, just for being that ridiculous of a driver. But yeah, it's nine, nine twenty-one sixteen five.
Okay. Nine twenty-one sixteen five.
The only time that, that's, there's an exception to that is when it's necessary to avoid conflict with other traffic or to avoid conflict with law. So, like, if, if somebody, there's a one, you know, one where it's too narrow for one car, for two cars to go through.
Oh, yeah.
But this is clearly not the case. They can't even block a portion of it.
Well, that makes perfect sense. Public safety. And on private property, it does, too.
So, what do you, Dale, what does that do? What do you think of, I mean, what does that do for you?
Well, I'm not gonna be the one out there giving tickets.
Well, I mean, that, that's different than, that way you kind of avoid your, hey, why are you giving everybody else a ticket? They're doing a specific act that the other people aren't doing, does that make sense?
Well, I don't know what you're getting to, because if somebody is you give somebody a ticket that's blocking this man's driveway, and the next car is not blocking the driveway, but they don't get a ticket, but they're doing the same thing.
They're, but see, to me, they're not doing the same thing. Like, if you pull up, Dale, you're gonna, without knowing that there's an issue, I'm inherent, this is kind of like
You just said that you can't, you can't park in the road.
Hey, okay, but that's a different citation than, "A person may not stop, stand, or park a vehicle in any of the following places," and number two in that list is in front of a public or private driveway.
Yes, so
You see what I'm saying?
I think.
Not loving it.
Well, if you wanna, if you wanna put it off till the next meeting, I'll bet Dale Munson will see it my way and we'll just tell you to do it and
You can tell, you can tell, one of you can, any one of you can tell me to work on anything you want.
Well, would you please?
I will be happy to, absolutely.
Okay.
Just waste your time.
What am I gonna do when every other person in every other school wants that in their way, too? Because like, I used to live on the road, I used to go to Everton School and had the same situation every school. So, we can do that for all the schools.
That's beautiful.
Yeah, it'd be better just to enforce what's already on the law, and then rather than trying to put signs in front of everybody's house with I don't know, I just don't see it as common sense to do a sign, because then everybody's gonna want a sign.
Well, here's the thing, I think you, you don't even have to wait, if your, if your thing is, "I don't want to wait two more weeks," you can go put a sign up today. Because it's literally a state code, it's state law. You cannot block that driveway. So, you can put a sign up, no stop, no stop, standing, parking, you can put a, "Do not block driveway." You can put seven signs right there. Legally, you don't need a local ordinance to do so. It is
Okay.
This is the same thing as, you see what I'm saying?
If it's legally, we don't
No, you don't need, you can go do it tonight.
And we can have, have it located and have the highway department to put a sign up.
Right, I mean, right now, yeah. And I, I think I'd be more specific than no parking state, because then everybody's gonna be confused by that. I think, and I've seen these before, you see them like in, you see them a lot of times in cities where there's like a stop, there's traffic lights, but somebody lives right there, and it says, "Do not block driveway." That, that's what I think I would put up personally. Because if you put, if you do put that, and she pulled one up, Jane pulled one up, no stopping, standing, or parking, to me, that would be confusing.
Yeah, because they're sitting in their car.
Well, but I mean, where, no, but I mean, where, where does that start, where does that stop? If you put, "Do not block driveway," it'd be hard to argue, I don't understand what that sign is.
So, name of that.
Thanks, Jeff.
Well, I don't want to, I'll do it if you want. I'm trying to get you to, I'm trying to get it resolved, though, I mean, like, I, you know what I mean?
Well, we'll see what we can do. Well, that, all that leaves is claims and payroll.
I'm going to approve our claims and payroll.
Okay, I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Two ayes, Jane. And that concludes our agenda for today.
You guys want to vote on put the sign up?
I say we table that matter. Because we don't need a sign when it's already involved.
Okay. Okay. If, if you wanna table it, we'll table it.
I wanna table it.
We'll, we'll take it up in a couple of weeks.
Yeah, let's table it and let the school do what Zach and the work that's already, they're already working on this. And the, maybe let that elderly, I think someone from the school or sheriff's department can let him know, that would be very good for him to know it's being worked on.
That it's a, that it's a, it is a violation of Indiana Code, and they will make sure it's enforced.
Yeah, that will help him, and he's not gonna have to weed eat or mow around a sign.
He doesn't, like, he cares, I'm the only one probably that has done with that.
All right, so, any other business we're doing?
Not unless you're forgetting something.
Um, the name of that company, Biolytics, that does the road stuff.
Biolytics, okay, I remember that now, yeah.
So we got that for the record.
We need to, we need to talk to them.
And so then I can make a motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
All right.
We have a motion, and a, and a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Two ayes, Jane. We're adjourned, thank you all very much.